So we can't just.
All right, hello.
How are you?
Great, it's Monday. All right, I'd like to begin our select board session for April 22nd. I'd like to start with the warrant items. First up is payroll number 96. I'd like to move that we approve payroll number 96 for $1,885.96. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I'd like to move that we accept accounts payable number 97 for $30,368.10. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
By the way, here's. I'd like to move to approve the minutes, select board meeting minutes for April 15th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, citizens issues.
If nobody speaks up, I will.
Okay, go for it.
Do you have any information on what's going on?
Yes, I do. I'm assuming you were asking for an update on.
Anything.
Yeah. Yes, I have, I told you I was gonna contact the CEO. And then I thought, well, probably I should just contact Chris Wormroidt himself and start there. And we did have a conversation. He explained to me that one of his issues was not having, being able to find the pins. So we talked about what he needed to do to make sure that he's well within the boundaries. He is going to show up tomorrow with a permit application. And we're gonna move that forward. And then I'm hoping to see Gary tomorrow night to get that approved as soon as possible.
What does that mean, a permit for what?
He will be able to build, put up three sheds where he can start to put his items. So start to, he's got a plate, he'll have a place where he can start to put his machinery and other things that are right now in the middle of the yard. So we've been working on getting that, we got three, actually there are three sheds that he wants to build. 12 by 16.
But they're temporary. For temporary, you don't need it, as far as I know.
I, yeah, I'm not sure. I know I, I did one when I put up my shed.
Yeah.
So.
But if it's a temporary one, I don't believe you need a permit.
I don't know what he's thinking exactly.
Yeah, I don't either. So to be safe, it's better to get confirmation with Gary. So that is supposed to happen tomorrow. And I will, I will check that out tomorrow and then have a conversation with Gary to, if a permit is needed, then to see how quickly he can.
No, I don't know if you saw your emails. I sent an email to the neighbors, his neighbors.
No, I have not.
Informing them that you assured me that the place will be cleaned up as of July.
Yep, in the June, July.
July 1st.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, he did not share that.
I just want to make sure I leave a paper trail, otherwise I'm afraid nothing happens.
No, and as we said last week, you know, you're, you're welcome to come in. And not just every week, that, that keeps us moving on it. And, but I, I saw him in person this weekend and had a conversation with him. And he did say he would come in tomorrow. And you should expect him actually April for the building.
Just, you know, some different information. I spoke with his closest neighbor and he showed me his well. His well is only 75 feet away from all this junk. And he hasn't been drinking his well water for two years. So I don't understand. Jeff, at one time you told me we have nothing in the ordinance. I mean, this is loud and clear in the state ordinance that it has to be 100 feet away that all oils, brake oils, transmission fluids and all that had to be treated properly. So I don't understand why this thing takes four years to be done.
Well, as I said, I appreciate you nudging. And we are moving forward with this and I am keeping in contact with him. He's, he's been sending pictures every week, not pictures of where it's being cleaned up, but at least he's.
Not yet being cleaned up.
No, but he's, he's at least starting to get a place to put things.
And if I remember correctly, on his proposal, he said April 1st, he will publish a list for items to be given away and be sold. Do you have, do you have that list?
No, but he actually has it. He did specifically mention that in my last email with him. That he, he has been working on a list. I have not seen it, but he's the one that brought it up.
You know, been working on it, been working the garage and the basement. In the meantime, it looks exactly the same. So that's why it's, it's a problem.
Yeah, and you know, I, I, I'm gonna keep pushing on it because I, I don't wanna, I don't like being taken for a ride. And I'm hoping that that's not what's happening. And I'm, I'm gonna trust Chris to, to do the right thing. And I will work with him.
You know, in the state ordinance, it states if things don't get done, the town has the right to clean it up, uncharge the expense to his real estate tax. He doesn't pay the real estate tax, you can put a lien against it.
Yep.
So there's plenty of tools to make him do things.
And we will do that if he doesn't have it cleaned up by the end of June. And like I said, I'm nudging him every week. You're nudging me.
Nudging is not enough. We need a sledgehammer to make him move because it's four years that people try to get him to clean up.
Yeah.
I understand behind the house, it's even worse, the stuff I don't see. It's if you've been behind the house, then not for two years. I understand it's even worse.
Well, we'll, we'll work on the front of the house.
Okay, yeah.
Um, so, yeah. So I will be in touch with him every week. And I, I know it doesn't look like anything's being done right now, but at least he's addressed, he's at least talking about some of the things that he's committed to. And he's aware that he's committed to those. And at this point in time, I'm gonna try to get him the benefit of the doubt.
You have to bad for the neighbor. The guy has tumor, has cancer, and he can't even drink water as well. He's a veteran.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody who did plenty for the country. In the meantime, the country doesn't do anything for him.
And, yeah, and I'm sorry, this has been going on so long. I, you know, I can, I think we now have, since we now have an application which we didn't have before, and even an application for somebody to submit for, none of that was in place. So we have to put those things in place. So that covers item number 11, which was on my list. So thank you, Mario. All right, any other citizens issues? All right, enjoy having this group here though today. But budget update. All right, can we go ahead and do the budget update?
We can do that. So tonight's focus is just on the town operations budgets. With a little bit of holdover, last week we held over the, some of the committee requests. And the town hall committee did have a meeting last week. And has a request for $4,600. That's a combination of electricity, heat, the exterior maintenance, which is the mowing, lawn, some supplies for the, for the building. And a little bit more for, for smaller repairs. The, they're not addressing some of the major items because really at this point, this select board is just taking responsibility for the issue of the ramp, the entryway door, and also the heating system.
Yeah.
The one major wild card to report on that though is the, the, over the, roughly about four or five years since we haven't done much work on the exterior of the building, the paint condition has gotten bad. And the front of the, of the town hall, it's not just a matter of paint. It's also actually, it's okay, some of the boards we replaced five years ago have now started to rot as well. So we have a rot problem. When Les Fossil came to look at it, he felt the biggest problem is just that you have rain and it's nothing, just runs down, basically the building. But that's, it's been like that for a little, you know, years. We're not sure why it seems to have accelerated in terms of the problem of rot. And the rot is around the, the windows, the framing, and the clad boards that butt up against the trim boards around the windows. So ordinarily, the committee would be proposing to be painting that side. But not comfortable doing that without doing some, some modifications and some renovations to, to, to the clad board and siding. So that's, I said, it's kind of like a wild card. We think the, the hall needs some work in terms of the exterior wood structure, particularly on the front side. We don't have an answer yet as to what, what would be appropriate. And actually, one of our recommendations was that we really should have a kind of a public discussion about the town hall and what we want to achieve.
Yeah. Actually, there was an issue that came up this weekend regarding the town hall as well. We had a pancake breakfast, the WCA. And the refrigerator is in really, really bad shape, so we didn't use it. So WCA is gonna talk to the town to see what can be done about that, whether it's WCA that buys it or whatever else. But, and the other thing is we were gonna use a great big urn. You know, when we have meetings and stuff there, like our town meetings, we use the urn and it wasn't working.
The coffee urn?
The coffee urn, the great big coffee urn. So we may do, but those are two issues that the WCA wanted to bring up.
Good.
Those are the only two that I know of that. It happened Saturday, just about the time where we're thinking about doing something for the town.
I would donate 70 cup coffee, no problem. And eventually I would donate a refrigerator, the freezer. But what my opinion is, all, all these years, I think, has been painted two times, but not from real professionals. So I think it's better you hire a real professional and have it painted properly and you will have much less problems.
It would have a rotten, or whatever.
I mean, I remember not too long ago, Bill Hopkins on this front painted it.
Can I just say while we have people donating kitchen items? I recently did sort of an evaluation. I just, I'm not familiar with what's in that kitchen. I wanted to know for renters and for elections, but I need stuff. So I kind of just went through everything and neatened it all up and figured it all out. And it's pretty hodgepodgey, like there aren't any pots and pans. There's like a bunch of bowls, but no plates, like no cups. We have some styrofoam cups, like it's weird. We have like some silverware, but not, it's like, let's have a kitchen set or not. But we're just somewhere in between in some awkward place. So eventually I wanted to bring up, hey, should we just invest in a basic set of kitchen things? Or should we let it go and everybody breaks their own stuff? Because right now it's not helping anybody, so.
Yeah.
Sound loud case anyone has a.
I know the WCA has its own.
No, they were like, these two drawers are ours. It's got like toothpicks, some old pamphlets and a bunch of towels that don't work.
Yeah, there's very little in there.
I actually consolidated it into one drawer and it's not.
But I would love to take you up on that, so we'll just have.
I might have some more stuff. But when you do things like that, they have to be secured. And somebody has to be there to issue the stuff to the people on some, because otherwise it disappears very quickly.
Probably what happened.
There, there was actually a lot of stuff in there. And I think in the great cleanout is when a lot of it went away because there were, there were other things that I'm aware of that are no longer there. So Mario was right about that. But then I think also some of the reason that some of it was taken away is because it has to be contained, within contained because of the mice. And so people are uncomfortable using the dishes if they're not in a container and they're secured so that they can't be defiled.
Well, we have a security deposit now with the town hall rental. So that can help protect us. And we're supposed to do an evaluation after each use to look for cleanliness and whether or not we need to use that security deposit to pay for cleaning. We could add to it, we should probably follow the town hall committee, checking the supplies, making sure a pan didn't go missing or plates didn't break or whatever, to charge renters and remiss things.
But it could get better rental. Like if you have, if you supply silverware and plates.
True.
You know, instead of 500 bucks, this stuff, you know, one fourth, you pay a dollar to rent. So you get 10 forks on the box, you have the knife and everything going with it. It could be okay for the town.
I, I wanted to add, thanks, thank you, Gay, that one of the other issues Saturday is before we could even set up for the pancake breakfasts, we had to really clean up all the turds that were there from the mice. So I think there's a mice problem in the building as well.
Most of it.
Yeah.
I think when we were having our committee meeting, we watched the mouse scurry across the proscenium over the stage. So.
That's, that's, that's an ongoing.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Alex spoke up.
Ongoing problem. Yeah, yeah. I just had to invest myself in my own home. So yes, definitely. But, but I just remembered Saturday that before we could get started in the kitchen, even we had to sort of clean up things, so, yeah, okay.
So I, I think in the midst of talking about public discussions, public hearings, we recommend one really on the town hall. Because there will be more expense than usual in terms of the fixing to the, to the front of the building. And then again, as Mario pointed out, the, the cost of the painting. Because it recognizes that we, we need to use progressions. We did, I think the last time I actually were painting was actually on the inside. And we did, and, and, you know, bid that out. And I thought that worked out great, it's in good shape.
Also, part of that discussion would be the creation of the ADA bathroom. Thinking the, the ramp is necessary to make the building ADA compliant because we use it for our, our elections. Another layer on top of that would be the bathroom. And there is a, a way to do it, but it just, it's probably, it's probably not as important as the ramp in terms of elections because people are just coming and going. But if, if we do want to rent it out to people for functions, I would think in that case, it, you probably need a, an accessible bathroom.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's up to the town how they want to use the building, like Jeff said. And that's where he's saying we probably should have a discussion because it will involve spending money. So we need to know if, you know, how the town folk feel about it, so.
Yep.
Mr. Rees came in and we, one of the items was, that we hadn't, we hadn't talked about was right landing. Were you gonna come in and talk about the right landing?
Yes, I am.
Great, so, so that's right on schedule. Before we move into the town office operations.
Yeah, because it's on the list here.
Yeah.
So go ahead, Richard.
I got this from, as a proposal to look at what there is for trees at the right landing. My thought is that we should probably contract with somebody to take down all of the tall trees and reforest it with something that doesn't grow as tall to protect, you know, the buildings behind the house and, and the house itself. So I'd like to go out and put together a request for folk to do just that. It would be a reforestation project rather than a, you know, assessment of what we have. Because that assessment estimate, you know, is $2,250. It's reasonable.
I think it's fine to consider that. I'd like to talk to the board to see what they think about it. I actually had, I'm, I'm sorry, I had something else that I thought you were gonna talk about, so this sort of surprised me. But.
I, I think this is a, this is a change to a town property. And it may be a very good change for the, the long-term perspective. But it's another one I think we, we should talk about as, as a, as a town. And, and in valuing that property. Because I can absolutely see the, the sense over the long haul to, to pay attention intentionally to what we have there. And we're having a problem with the trees coming down. This last year's storms, a number of them literally didn't hit the house. Right. They could very well.
So it is, you know, did do some damage to one of the, the buildings. So it's, it's, it's something I think we've got to address before it gets worse.
But I'd suggest that's maybe another thing. I think we should have a public discussion about what, about people's feelings about that property. And what does this make sense to do?
Okay.
And, and maybe there's other ideas about what makes sense to, to do with the, your problem. Before we jump into getting estimates for a reforestation.
Okay.
Can I just, an estimate should be free. Like Jimmy does free estimates. So any tree arborist worth their salt usually does a free estimate. So you could have a few arborists come and just give you an opinion first that then you can take to the town. So you're kind of going on some.
Some knowledge.
Not professional knowledge without having invested money yet.
Well, but I think first, what do we want to go down this road? What, what, what do people want to do with, with that property?
So you already asked this individual to come and do an estimate?
What?
You already asked this individual to come and do an estimate?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so what?
That's what I'm looking for, an approval to do. Because I, I think we, we have that on the table.
So this is, this isn't, if this person comes and does an evaluation just to look at, it's gonna cost you $2,350, cost of town. Got it, got it. I was thinking this was the, to do the work. Yes, to do the work. You're, you're right, got it. Yes, okay, yes.
After what happened elsewhere, it seems like it would be an awesome idea to have like Jim Wiles or Mike Candor, my cues.
This is my cue, this is my cue.
To evaluate.
$2,300 to.
Oh, to the actual estimate. Then go to Jim Wiles.
Yes.
But what you really need to look at before even having a discussion, because people need to know this, is what trees are unsafe and likely to go down. Because right now, that's threatening a town asset. And it seems like you would want to know. Because we've had people do that. Because you don't want something remaining there until you go into a four-year-long project. And then by then, something's already fallen down. If you have safety on there, you want to be able to talk about that.
Yeah, right. And I, I don't mean to speak another arborist. I'm sorry, because this may be something more in-depth. Like Jim will go and be like, well, probably about X, Y, and Z and give you a ballpark. So I don't, I don't know what's being proposed there. And it's, I'm sure it's worth whatever he's proposing.
Yeah.
But if the town doesn't want to spend money for, you probably could give some more casual opinions for free. And then you would know whether or not reforestation is necessary or just taking out these five trees or what, before we like propose something.
Jim, you had your hand.
Yeah, if they're pine trees and they can hit a building, they're a hazard.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, that connects, yeah, that connects to the next point, which I thought you were gonna come and talk about. Because you sent us a note about wanting to, to get some estimates for the roof. Because the.
Yeah.
That was something that you talked about doing over the winter. So I'm assuming you wanted to talk about that.
Yes, I do. I sent you the request proposal. And I just wanted to know if I should send those out to find, you know, three semitals. And at that, as I had written it, was what you were looking for.
Yeah, it was pretty simple. Did you look at it? Yeah.
I did. I, I, my only question again, trying to be cheap is you specified 50-year life asphalt shingles. And I didn't think asphalt shingles lasted 50 years.
Yeah, they make, they make lifetimes.
Okay, but I, I also look at the sense of saying that building where it's located is at risk. And, and so I'm not sure it's gonna be there for 50 years.
Well, that's where we have to wait, we have to move it up a, up a bit.
Which is why you have to move the trees so that you can move the.
You can move the building.
The building, exactly, yeah. It's in a bad, bad place. And, and for those of you who don't know, the surge, the December surge did go just a little bit into the, the basement.
And it's done at the water.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah. So it definitely is in a bad place right now, so.
That was my only, it was just because in terms of the, the work to specify, the replacement, the cleanup, it all looked appropriate for, for repairing that roof.
But I wonder if we should make it 25 a year instead?
What?
Maybe 25 a year would be more realistic?
There is slim savings between lifetimes and 25 years. Lifetimes not gonna last a lifetime.
Yes, depends who's like.
Read warranty, you will find that for about six, seven years, you're gonna get nipples on the dollar.
So I'll change it to 30?
Does that sound okay? Yeah.
Okay, and then I'll order that.
I'm backing Jimmy up. We just did our week this year and we had all of those. And it was less than $1,000 difference total cost to go with a lifetime warranty.
Wow.
And that was ice and water shield on the entire roof, not just the bottom of it, a lifetime. The value is probably there for us, even if the building goes away, the roof will still be there.
Okay. That's a good data point.
We could float on it.
It's all labor. It's all, you know, it's all labor. So you put on shingles, it's gonna last. When you put on shingles, you're gonna replace, it's gonna cost you the same. The only difference is the quality of the shingles, the cost of the shingles. And I would, I'd recommend using the best because of that factor. That's the speed.
Well, if it's not that much of a price difference, then it doesn't, yeah, yeah. So, Richard, it seems like, you know, especially if we're considering a new roof and there are trees that are potentially gonna hit that roof, that once you get your estimates, bring them back to us and let's have a conversation and figure out what to do at the same time.
Okay.
How to move forward with the tree issue. And maybe by that time, it could be, be one of the warrant items or whatever and, and let the town have some input into that.
I think you should look at metal roofs. They made big progress, especially with how, with roofs near the salt border. So on, I don't think there's still price difference.
And it's not a historical building, so you're not preserving something. So that may be one of your options to look at too, Richard, is metal roofs.
I'll change the R2 to reflect that.
I, I think it'd be nice to actually, I, I, personally, Kim, you may have done asphalt. I've done the metal. And I, but I haven't looked at asphalt. So I don't really know how to look at the two, we could very simply, it would be nice to know.
I have done a comparison for both a couple of years ago, but I just like the.
Certainly has become something that's current in today's environment.
And very light maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
Particularly if we still have pine needles coming down.
Jim, you had your hand raised.
I was just curious if, Richard, were those all pine, the pine trees down the side of the driveway and the ones up there? Those are trees of concern?
Yeah, well, the whole point are my concern.
Yeah.
Anything that has a single trunk.
They're all pine trees. There is a pine wood to do up there.
Yeah, there's one tree that has a lot of limbs that goes out around it. And it, you know, doesn't seem to be a potential problem. But all of these single trunks.
There's one hanging on the other one out there. Nothing that would.
All the ones like that, those telephone poles.
Yeah, telephone poles.
And once a couple come down, they keep coming down.
Yeah, you know, that's my thought. We should just get rid of the telephone poles and replace it with something that.
Cedar bush or something.
Is bushy and doesn't get, grow and fall.
Now, we have the fact that we don't know how deep the soil is there. We don't know how well roots can actually anchor there. So as these trees get bigger, where do they actually anchor them?
Amen.
So again, the point is excellent one, by looking at uh, it would, and what might be a, a more long-term uh way of maintaining beauty of the property.
Yeah.
But I, I, I feel like I'm, I'm adding to our discussion, but I, I think it would make sense to maybe have a discussion every town. Maybe one of this, of, of the two town properties. And, and have that be a discussion for, invite the public to, to share their thoughts.
Yeah.
And have the, the committees, can the right-line committee of the town hall committee can talk to the situation and, and solicit input? But I really, it'd be great to get some input from townspeople and how they value the use of the properties.
Yeah, and I think having some estimates on the roof at the same time, for, for people to know that, you know, that, that's an issue that we're trying to address.
I will do that.
Yeah, letting people know on the safety issues. If you're gonna pull them together, you wanna be able to give them that information. Yes, yeah.
Okay, anything else, Richard?
No.
No, okay. Uh, now.
No, okay, okay. So I have, uh, if, if, I don't, I think there's anybody else in the Zoom, but I guess for those who were watching later on the Zoom. I've shared um a, a picture of the, the budget lines for town office operations. Um, and what I'll do is I'll kind of read the, the, the budget area. What we had budgeted for dollars this year, what we've spent so far this year, uh, just to give a flavor. Uh, and, and where we have in some projections, but what we think we're gonna be at the year end. Just kind of see what the, the, the amount of, and the types of expenses that we have for town office operations. The, the biggest single item that we had relating to basically a good town uh operations was legal. Uh, we had budgeted sixty, sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we did not spend anywhere near like that.
Not yet.
This is true.
Thank you.
We spent uh less than five thousand dollars so far. Uh, and uh, that goes back just briefly, that we did reach a uh. An agreement referred to as a stipulated judgment from the courts last summer. Uh, after going into mediation with the green leaves. And this is with regard to Baker Road, because most of that money was targeted. It said we had gone into court for litigation to pay for that. Uh, we're not done out with Baker Road, unfortunately, that'll be later item of discussion. But at least thus far, we kept our legal expenses down. Uh, trying as much as possible to, to, to not incur the cost for the town. Uh, it will be more as we get to the end of the year, but at least so far, it's been much less than sixty thousand budgeted. Uh, advertising, public notices, those notices in the paper about uh planning board meetings, about peer permits. Uh, other public hearings, we've only spent five hundred and seventy dollars of the one thousand budgeted so far. So we have a, an item for dues and books. Uh, that's the, the main, primarily the main municipal association dues. And then we get copies of materials that are used, say like an assessing handbook, or municipal officer's handbook. Uh, which come from the MMA. So far, we've spent a total of thirty-two hundred and fourteen dollars against a budget of thirty-one hundred. So we've actually spent more this year than, than we budgeted, but, but not by much. Uh, but that's kind of the magnitude of that. Most of that is actually the uh, the dues. And I should say, not just for MMA, but also for the professional associations, the town clerks association, the treasurers. That are staffed with, from belonging to those groups. Uh, training, we had increased the budget to three thousand dollars uh to support staff training. One of the big items we had was we knew we were gonna be changing over to a, a different type of trio system, municipal budgeting and, and management system. Uh, and so we went to a three thousand dollar budget. We've actually only spent eight hundred and sixty. Uh, and we, we, we'll probably end up about a thousand dollars spent for training uh so far. But in addition to that, we've spent almost six hundred dollars for travel. So put the two together, and the travel's really related to going to training classes. Uh, so people may be going to Bangor or Augusta or someplace for, for the training. Uh, so sixteen hundred dollars against a budget of three thousand is what we spent. Again, we've, we've luckily didn't, didn't require the, the trio training that we thought we were gonna require.
Fiscally, it goes from month to month?
From July first to June thirtieth.
Okay.
Uh, election expenses, uh, we've spent, I guess, a budget of three thousand, we've spent twenty-seven thirty-two, twenty-seven hundred and thirty dollars. And so, uh, and I, I, the town clerk may have a, a forecast. We'll probably get, go over the budget, because we have the uh, the June election and town meeting. So. The, the liability insurance, which is uh the town's liability insurance that, that uh. Uh, that's uh was budgeted at twelve thousand. We spent just under eight thousand, and with our next couple of payments, we'll probably be up around ten thousand dollars. Well, for liability insurance. So that's a fairly substantial expense for the town. Uh, lien filing, uh, this is where we have to file a lien because of property tax issues. We budgeted um two thousand dollars, we've spent eight hundred and seventy-five. Uh, and I don't know how much more we likely spent, but probably not too much more this year. Office supplies and general expenses, uh, we budgeted seven thousand, we've only spent about half of that, thirty-five hundred. But again, that's, that's a lot of paper, a lot of toner, uh, a lot of supplies for, for, for the office staff. Uh, it's nice that the archivist is here, because we have an item for the town record book preservation. And uh, we budgeted last year twenty-six hundred and fifty dollars, uh, it came in at, I think, twenty-six hundred and fifty-one. So it makes sense.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, uh, and uh, so uh, I'm not quite sure what we, we wanna plan for, for next year. But we, we're pretty much on target for the, the expense this year. Uh, you wanna weigh in, Gabe, with what you, do you have any projections, or you wanna come back with a projection?
Well, at some point, um, wherever you wanna put me on here. I was gonna go over the book we had preserved last year, what I'd like to get preserved in this coming year. And I have a quote, a request for a quote in on that, so I don't know what it is at this point. Um, but it probably will be bearable. So it's a smaller book, but it'll probably be fairly close. Um, so the other thing, so since, since I'm talking about it, should I just continue your part? Okay, um, I didn't forget you this, cause you had asked at some point. To better understand what the preservation, what was involved in preservation and what we did as a part of. So I did for one, I did a, a town report for the annual report this year. To bring everybody up to date and provide a history. But also, because now so many records are gonna be available to everybody digitally. I wanna make sure everybody knows about the new digital library and how they can access that. At this point, we have town reports from nineteen hundred to present. We have all of the town clerk record books and valuation books that we've had preserved to date, and we've had fourteen books preserved. We also have on the last three comprehensive plans, we have some maps. And select board minutes are on there from twenty-twelve to present. So everybody can look at whatever they want to about town government, and we will continue to digitize and put more things on there. When we actually digitize, or when we actually preserve a book. We start with something like this book, that's in such bad shape that we have it tied together, because the binding's gone. And what they do, obviously, you don't want a lot of people touching this at this point. Aren't the records are old and they can be damaged just by touch. This particular one is nineteen thirteen to nineteen twenty-seven.
Wow.
And the one we just had done was eighteen ninety-nine to nineteen fourteen. And the reason I'm suggesting we just do the next sequential town clerk record book is for overall town history. That's where the most information is. It's where the town annual town warrants are, any special town meeting warrants and records. In pet, in the really old ones, they actually put vital records in there, they put agreements. It's like for a time, the town had its own vehicles, because it took kids to school. The agreements and leases and everything for, all that kind of stuff is in town clerk record books, as well as election results. So there's a ton of information in them. When we send them to co-file, who is pretty much the only game in town for what we're doing. What they do, because they're preserving it, they're not conserving it. If they were conserving it, which costs like three times what it costs to preserve it. They would actually do everything within this particular binding. And they would re-sow a binding for it, but they still would, and they would put it in a box, and they would not want people touching it. What we do is what most towns do, because not only do we digitize it and make it accessible to people that way. But what they do is they rebind it from current binding. And whether they preserve or conserve, what they do is they clean every piece of paper. They deacidify it so that there's not continued deterioration. And then they encapsulate it in what looks like plastic, that's actually an archival polyester. So not only do we have it digitized, but once we've done this, people can actually look at the original document as well without damaging it.
Yeah.
You don't have to worry about ripping it, you don't have to worry about oil on your fingers or anything like that. So it's really awesome. Costs a lot of money, but it's awesome. But you can see, when you start with that, it's a much better option. And now, again, everything we get digitized, we put online, so people can come in here and use a computer if they want, but they can also do it at home.
And then where are these ultimately kept?
They're, they're kept in what we call the vault.
Perfect timing, thank you.
So.
So you'll have a, a estimate.
Yeah, and actually, what I need to do is probably go in the other room, and one thing I forgot to count when I asked for it was the index pages. So I can give her the exact amount of pages, so we can get a hold for doing this book. And then we would wanna do this, and the other thing that Ashley and I are working on is. We currently have all the commitment books, which essentially are today's valuation books. In three ring binders, which are not archival. And they're supposed to, again, in the same way, there are certain things that are dictated by the state as how they, it should be done. They're supposed to actually be bound. And so we're, what we're gonna do is we can copy them ourselves onto archival paper. And then we can send them to the University of Maine, who can bind them really inexpensively. I think they gave me a quota of like seventy dollars, because they bind student theses all the time. So they have all of the equipment, it's a really easy thing.
Oh, great.
Um, it's not like this kind of preservation. All we need to do is copy it on the archival paper and have that done. So we wanna do, we have, we wanna do a demo book in the next month. So that we'll know what it actually costs, and you'll be able to physically see the difference between a three-ring binder, that's like a three-inch or four-inch binder. Versus it's supposed to be more this size when it's bound. So it would make a big difference for our storage, as well as for maintaining the integrity of the record.
Right.
So.
We said copy onto archival paper. Is that using a copier, or was that having a special thing, taking it out to have it copied on the archival paper?
There, there are a couple of options. We can copy it onto archival paper. It's no different than, it's just, it's kind of, it, it can, when we don't really have a high-volume copier. Doing tons of paper is not, sometimes kind of stressful on the machine. We can ask Lincoln County to do it, or Lincoln County Publishing, we can get a quote from them to see how much it would be. But I think they would also do it at the University of Maine if we wanted to do that, that they would also cop, copy it for us. Again, they're all set up to do theses and what, for most purposes, is pretty low-cost binding compared to what we paid for most binding. So we can see what works out best. That's partly why we wanna look at what the options are and get a final cost.
I keep thinking, when you were here before, and, and then also when the um, the history committee was here, it's like. Having a place or some kind of show where, you know, just being able to see the difference in that, and to see what's available. Um, just, I feel like an open house or something.
I have brought them to town meetings before, and it, we, we easily could do that, like this year, bring this book in this. This is what we did last year, this is what we'd like to do next year. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, you can see the difference.
Maybe when the budget, that budget item comes up and being able to illustrate, so that people understand where the money is going.
Yep, and we also, like, we, when we've done it in the past, we let people know when they take a break. Um, that they could come look at it, and we have it there so they could see before the town meeting, during break after. Um, and then just point it out for people during a bunch of items, but yeah, cause it.
So that's your responsibility.
Okay, I'm on it.
All right, thanks, Gabe.
Little show and tell for the town meeting.
Absolutely, yeah.
So another major item of expense that we have is the computer programs and technical support. Uh, we budgeted seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars for that. So far this year, we spent about eighty-five hundred. Uh, but that, that doesn't include, I guess, all the pieces that I think we'll be spending. And we also have a expense from, from some of the other, the Burgess computer support. Uh, we have a combination of the trio, uh, hair software that we use again to, to run town operations. Uh, we'll also be adding in an expense we've been occurring with CAI for the online tax map. So when you go online to the website, and you see the, you know, the tax map information down at the bottom. Uh, CIA hosts that information for us digitally, uh, and, and so again, you can interact with the maps. Um, so we pay currently thirty-seven hundred dollars uh for that, and for the regular updates each year. So package that together gets up to be about almost eighteen thousand dollars, uh, from the different, different types of computers. And we're, I, I think we'll be underspending that this year, but I'm not quite sure how much when all the bills come in. We have an expense for the annual audit, uh, that's sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, that's been uh consistent uh the last two years. We have an assess, assessing expense, so this is the expense for our assessor's agent. To go out and do the assessments from, from the building permits and from any changes, requests that come in from, uh, from residents, tougher taxpayers. Uh, we budgeted ten thousand dollars last year, uh, and we've spent fifty-six hundred so far, and I estimate we'll spend a little under seven thousand. Uh, by the end of the year, we'll actually, should be starting to do the assessing uh for this, this fiscal year, uh, starting probably next month. We, we also incurred expense for the internet, uh, from, from Spectrum, that's relatively small. Uh, it's only twelve hundred dollars, uh, and we spent about a thousand so far. Uh, we budgeted last year for a website, three thousand dollars. Uh, we've only spent thirty-eight dollars so far, but I expect we'll be spending more. I just don't have a forecast for that. But under the three thousand dollars. Posted, we, we estimated, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars, uh, we spent a little over a thousand. And so I, I think that's gonna come in more, about twelve hundred. And then uh, the annual town report and, and town meeting expense, we budgeted two thousand dollars. And uh, so far, we've spent four hundred and twenty-three. But uh, the town, the annual town report and town meeting is, is still happening. So I'm sure we're gonna be up closer to the two thousand, uh, though again, April may have a, a gut on that.
No, I'm seeking estimates right now on printing, and I had a few email responses, so I should be able to report on that this week.
So, so part of messages is that we, we tend, tend to budget a little high. And some places is very high, like legal, uh, because we don't want to run short. We wanna be careful. Uh, and we, we are, the actions are coming in almost always under. Uh, and when they've been over, it's, it's relatively rare enough. Um, so we're in, in good shape on, on the, the town operations budget. For this building, uh, some of the expenses, we budgeted uh thirty-five hundred dollars for electricity, we spent twenty-one hundred so far. Uh, for heat, uh, we budgeted thirty-five hundred dollars, and the expense so far has been seventeen hundred and twelve dollars. Uh, maintenance, work done on the building, we budgeted two thousand, we spent six. Uh, maintenance, work done on the building, we budgeted two thousand, we spent six hundred and fifty-five. So far, again, this is, this is why I say spent, it's through nine months, so we've got three more months to go. Uh, but again, it's just showing that we're we're in in good shape on budget sense. The outdoor maintenance, that's kinda cleaning up the parking lot, the trash removal. Uh, we've spent uh, on a budget of fifteen hundred dollars, we spent six hundred and fifty-five. Uh, for telephone, we've spent, we budgeted two thousand. We've spent thirteen hundred, we'll probably spend seventeen hundred, almost eighteen hundred dollars. And I think Ashley is actually working to see if she can find a way to reduce that cost, whereas by by changing our our telephone system. One new item was, we 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 have, but uh, we have a budget of sixty five hundred dollars for equipment. Uh, and uh, that's for the 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 new uh, computers for the town office. Uh, and we spent sixty hu- sixty one hundred ninety-two, so just a little bit under on that. Uh, but we we fell in under the the budget amount for the new computers. And the last item I've got is the uh, building security, Cunningham Security. We budgeted five hundred, we've spent so far this year, three hundred and twenty dollars. So, uh, all in all, we budgeted sixty six thousand dollars. Uh, I don't actually have the total of how much we've spent, but it's considered the rest of that. Sixty six hundred dollars without the legal, the legal stands on its own. So I went through that quickly, at least you could see it, uh, any questions on on those items? Mister Richard.
When I look at this year's budget compared to last year's budget. What are the two numbers?
The worksheet I'm looking at, um, doesn't have everything.
Okay.
Uh, I, we, we budgeted, there were puts and takes. So the prior year budget was in a similar ballpark at the sixty six thousand uh, this year. For example, we had a budget for assessing sixteen thousand two years ago. This year's budget was only ten. So we, we actually made some changes down, but then we added, uh, because we knew the software was gonna cost more. So there were some puts and takes from the prior year's budget. But also note, we also spent a lot less. We didn't spend sixteen thousand dollars for assessing two years ago. Uh, so uh, so I, so I'm kinda waffling, I I realize.
I guess you are.
It's roughly about about, it was not that different. We did go up some for for town office operations, this last year's budget. And if you go back to the materials we distributed for last town meeting, we actually have a budget comparison. So you can see what we budgeted for the prior two years and what we budgeted for this last year. Uh, and we'll do the same thing this year.
According to.
Well, I'm doing an analysis of that and I'll send it to you.
According to Ashley's numbers, it's, if, there's about six thousand dollars difference um, with the um, the first part that Jeff mentioned. And then the um, the the office expenses, the heave and that kind of thing was about six thousand dollars off. Higher than last year.
Yeah, look at the numbers.
Okay, well, this is gonna stretch the game, basically just discussing uh, where we're trending. Uh, and then with Ashley altogether, basically what the budget could look like. And then that'll be great for more, more further discussion.
I'm looking at the Warren um, from twenty twenty-two, and it looks like um, we requested about sixty grand in twenty twenty-two.
Against the sixty-six or so.
Yeah.
You gotta look at the internal of all that.
You, 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 material yourself, cuz we had everything down last year, despite the budget discussion. So you could do the comparison.
Yeah, good.
All right.
Okay, I'm done.
All right, um, I wanna move on to committee's policy, uh, April, you wanna take that?
Sure. So I've been working on a committee's policy, we have two or three um, on the books right now. And they're a little bit of hodgepodge stuff, um, kind of scattered all over the place. We actually had a bit of a project to find all the policies, you get them in one booklet, cuz then they weren't in a booklet, um, or online anywhere. So we found them and um, there's several of them um, that were kind of pieces of things, but didn't all hang together very well. So I've been working on rewriting and getting a nice comprehensive committee's policy. And then while I was at it, I went to other town websites. That's a nice thing, we have four hundred ninety-nine other towns you can look at. And a lot of them have done really great stuff with comprehensive policies, so I read a whole bunch and I put together um, a committee's policy. Which I've been sending out to committee chairs for the last few weeks, saying hello, need some feedback. Um, really haven't heard back from anybody, so I guess no news is good news, um, but.
Yeah, I haven't heard my news yet.
Yeah, so I work with committees a lot, so I wanted to have a good systematic way to be like, here's what we need to know, here's when we need to know it. Here's when you should elect your officers, here's when you should report it. Um, and make sure there's just clarity for everybody involved, because it's clerk, I've kind of gotten like bits and pieces of information here and there. And sometimes a committee chair will tell me something and I'll be like, oh, thanks. Uh, but I have not gotten it consistently from every committee. And so I just wanted to sort of create a system so that we have that and right, everybody knows what should be provided when. Um, and I can make sure my records are correct, cuz that's my job, um, as town clerk.
But you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
You're doing a great job.
I'm trying. So we have a policy to pass tonight that kind of smashes together all our current policies and adds in some new stuff. Um, I sent it around, but not to everybody, mostly committee chairs, but if anyone in the audience wants one, I made four copies, so you can do that. Um, how long do you wanna spend on this? Cuz I could kinda.
I think if anybody has questions or if you have anything specific you wanna mention, I'll leave it up to you.
Yeah, well, I was just trying to look through and see if there's anything that could be different or departure. So I think most of this is taking what we already do, um.
I have one that I don't.
And writing down what we already do as current policy. So I'm just like gonna skip through and see if there's anything that uh, will be new. One thing that we added, I'm gonna say we, me, and I wrote this and I ran it by a select board and they said, we'll probably vote for that if you bring it up. So this is one of the things that um, they were okay with me putting in here, was an application for committee membership. Because a lot of times it's just word of mouth, we don't have anything in writing, oh, I think so and so wants to be on the planning board, oh, maybe we'll appoint them. Other towns do just like a one page quick application, which I thought would be nice, cuz it would allow me to collect contact information, which I'm often lacking. Um, and it would just give people a place to say, I wanna be on X committee, or even list out several committees they wanna be on and why, and what they bring to the table. And then the select board, instead of having some emails or word of mouth, would actually just have something in writing they could consider. And then we would have something on file, so maybe in the future, when we're looking for committee members, we can go back through that and say, oh, so and so wanted to be on this committee. And we didn't have a space for them back then, but now we have this new committee, maybe we can contact them. So I thought it would be a nice way to sort of build up that um, bank of.
And also it would allow people, I would assume that would be on the website and would allow people who are not in the loop.
Right.
That are also interested in participating to be able to connect.
Yeah, cuz it's a little foggy, it's like, well, reach out to the select board, reach out to the committee chair, which you can do, but that might feel a little intimidating if you're new to town. So it might be nice to just be able to fill it out, pass it in, let people know who you are and what what skills you have.
Now, is it okay for like committee chairs to fill it out for people? Because sometimes we have people good, who just don't wanna like do any.
It's not specified, but I think I was thinking about, and I think that would be fine, because yes, you're a chair, you're just trying to get someone on your committee.
Yeah.
If you can collect their contact information.
Yeah, certainly to get that stuff, cuz you need it, but sometimes people, they're more than willing to help out, but they don't wanna get into what they think of as formal. They don't wanna have to actually fill out any kind of computer or anything.
And I could see the staff filling it out for someone, oh, I wanna do this, we have their contact information, so we just write it down, but it's something.
Yeah.
So it's a little more concrete, cuz it seems very like fabulous lately. Um, go ahead, Richard.
The thing I found disturbing in that whole approach was that for a committee to operate effectively. It has to have members that can work together. And to me, the way you have presented it allows the board to appoint committee members that would absolutely destroy the community approach of that committee. So to me, there has to be an absolute recommendation from the committee itself as to what members are accepted as a part of that committee.
Yeah, no.
Cuz otherwise, it'll just, the committees will just fall apart.
I, I think we agree, Richard, and this is something that was carried over from an earlier policy. Um, I'm gonna see if I can find the exact wording here, but the previous policy said that the select board appoints committee members. That's just the sort of the baseline MMA law, they're the electeds, they appoint the committee members. But our previous policy said that's carried over into this policy, they do it with the input of the committee chairs.
Yeah.
And, you know.
We're not just gonna go and say, oh, we need somebody on this.
But input to me does not seem as significant.
Yeah. It's not a change, this is how it's, how it's always.
It has to be more than input, it has to be a strong recommendation from the committee itself. Before somebody gets added to that committee.
So again, I have not changed this policy, this is a whole carryover before.
It had, it did go from the committee chairs.
Yeah.
It always has, and I don't think April has changed that.
I have not changed that. Um, and I think the select board agrees, you of course want the input of the committee chair when you're appointing people. So that's not, that's not a change, that's how it's been and that's how it continues to be.
But I don't agree with it in the way it's presented right now.
Well, I'll try to find exactly where I put it, but the intent was to carry it back, phrasing over from the old policy, because there's no change desire here.
Well, I'll point out those elements that I have a problem with.
And and Richard.
I send you, send you a a text on that.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping to vote on this tonight anyway, uh, because it's been out there for several weeks now, months now.
Yes, yes, if you had given me that feedback earlier, we could've talked it over, brought it back to the select board. So I wish you'd emailed me or called me up or come find me, you know where to find me.
And it is a po- it 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 will be a policy if it's accepted uh, and approved. But um, that doesn't mean it can't change at some point in time, but but we need to have a policy. But, but I I can tell you at least from my perspective that any, anytime there's a committee, it, you know, we want it to work well together. And we would definitely want input from, um, you know, we're not just gonna go pick somebody off the street. Basically, you, you're gonna hear about somebody before we would probably. And um, and we would talk together on that.
Yeah.
So it it's not like we would just shove somebody down your throat because you need more members, that's, it's not the intent.
Okay.
It wouldn't work then as a, as a volunteer committee, I I mean, because.
Why would not?
No, no, I mean, the whole nature of being a committee is is being able to work together, so, um, yeah.
All right, so moving on, we talked about the application piece. Um, we added a piece about planning board members and alternates. And I believe appeals board members completing a main municipal association training uh, within six months of being appointed. Since those are some pretty intense committees that deal with a lot of law, we have all these free trainings offered that are offered regularly. We thought that would be a good requirement, they also have access to um, manuals. Um, we clarified expenditures, some questions have come up about that recently, how committees make expenditures, so there's a section on that. Um, going through the select board, going through the treasurer. Um, it's kind of been the way it's already been done, but we wanted to really formalize that and make that clear for committee members. Um, oh, electing a chair and a secretary each year. So I think this kind of has been the tradition, but it's not written down anywhere and I don't hear about officers. So I thought it would be good to put that in there, every year, we reappoint committee members. So let's have that new committee elect their chair and secretary reported to the um, town clerk, so we know who the officers are. And you can elect other officers, but that's sort of a minimum of your of committee, um. Um, and I added a little bit, this is something the select board is already kind of been doing this year, if you're a committee chair, you know. They've been asking people to come in and sort of share their, what happened in the past year, what their plans are for the coming fiscal year, roughly in the early spring. So I put that in in here, uh, that that's sort of part of the chair's duty at that time of year is to come in and report to the select board. Those are really the standout items that are a little different than what we currently do. Um, and then in the end, we've put committee descriptions, so some committees had no description, some committees had a book. So I tried to boil these all down so that they all have simple one to three sentence purposes. Not so much like you do all these things, numbers one through twenty, but here's your purpose. And then the committee can kind of do that and it can be a little more flexible and change year to year depending on the town's needs. Um, and also define them like, are they standing, are they ad hoc? How many members do they have? Um, how many alternates they have, what are the terms? Cuz this is, as a new clerk, this was very hard to figure out and kind of all over the place. Some of them have bylaws, some of them have it written down in town policy, some of them don't have it written down anywhere, some are in state law. So I tried to just put it all in one place, so we know what these committees are and how they function. Um, I didn't want to, without having to go figure it all out. Any questions?
Yes, I I know that was a heck of a lot of work, I mean, it's taken several months. I'd like to make a motion that we accept um, the town committee's policy. Um, do I have a second? Second? All in favor? Okay, we'll see how it works and if there are issues, um, then we can always um, revise the policy as needed. Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, to the ordinance review committee update, can you give us an update?
Um, hopefully getting the draft, new draft um, policies to the attorneys this week. And uh, John and I are are working on setting up some dates for uh, public meetings to go over the new proposed ordinances. So probably sometime in May, we're looking at two evenings, around six thirty. Um, don't have any specific dates yet, but obviously um, we'll get the word out, we'll need to plan and decide on dates for that. Um, that's it.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Are you going to mention some consequences if some of the ordinances are not followed?
I think there's, if there, I'm trying to think of uh, well, the the biggest one would be the nuisance ordinance.
I don't know, but it would make sense that people know.
So if it's, if it's going to be. It's a, since it's a standalone ordinance, it's not being folded into our our current building co-ordinance. It does have um, uh, that that process.
So, yes. Sean, did you have anything to add to what, um?
No, no, uh, uh, we're finalizing the uh, road access, the access to the uh, town road ordinance. And I just have a, it's sort of a bit more.
Great, and then they're gonna go to the attorneys.
Which would be a perfect segue to the next topic of discussion, which is roads. Yeah?
Uh, not much to add this week. Strong cleanup's been completed on the north end. South end is yet to be done, still waiting on a grader. Those are the next two big hurdles we're facing right now. Road's very pothole and raining, fair amount, can't really grade before or after rain. Uh, but I'm just waiting to get a hit from Jack, which I'll be talking to tomorrow, that's why I should know that tomorrow. Battle of Crocker on the paving. That'll be a couple of weeks out on the price on that. Get my road plan for the year made, which can be discussed. I don't have, wouldn't be tonight, I happen. I think we discussed it a little bit last week, maybe. So nothing new to add, but I'm hoping next week I can say this is where we're at. And at least have a grader maybe on the island.
If you're going to bring in your plan next week, or whenever you're ready, we can talk about it more at length. Okay. Correspondence, I didn't have anything for correspondence. Okay.
Nothing separate from what I want to talk about today.
Okay, let's go to admin items. And actually, we had two appointments to make, and I have the paperwork for one.
Great, the second one doesn't require paperwork, but should be a vote, so I can talk about that a little bit.
All right, all right, so we'd like to appoint Andrew Buckner to the Shellfish Committee as an alternate. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept his appointment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
The second item to appoint me is the Shellfish Committee and Department of Marine Resources liaison. Lincoln brought this up a few weeks ago. They brought it up to me again recently, they need to have an official person appointed. It makes sense for a two-year town clerk, because I have to submit all those reports anyways. So he just needs you guys to make an official vote to appoint me that, and.
What do you think, should April do it or not?
I don't know, she probably does anything as it is.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to move that we appoint April as Shellfish Committee DMR liaison. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? And today is April twenty-second. All right, and other legal business, I had on there the Wormwood issue, which we've already talked about, and Jeff, you had an update.
Maker. So last week, we announced that we worked with our attorneys to prepare a motion in the court to have the court recognize a violation of the stipulated judgment from last summer that had taken place. The attorneys did not follow through with that motion, the reason being that the Greenland's attorney sent them a picture showing what it looked like, the instructions, and removed that. That was not the case, but unfortunately, before it could correct that opinion or impression from the attorneys, the litigator was on vacation. So he'll be back this week. But at the same time, I also had a discussion with Chief Deputy of the Sheriff's Department about some of the options. And his comment was, well, given the situation, and given that we've established the property line of the road, we should be able to take action against objects in the road, since we've established where the road is. And thought it would be reasonable, and said that possibly they could provide support and sent the former deputy there to assist if the town were to remove the instructions. The instructions could be removed. The property owner could be billed for the cost of that removal. And they could also come back and ask for their property return if they so chose. But basically, not wait for them to take action, but ask for the town to take action. But the sheriff's department indicated they would provide assistance by having a deputy on hand, provide security. So that's where that stands. What I'd like to ask the select board is whether you consider having an executive session with the town attorney to talk about the litigation, and talk about the matter so far. So we can get this sorted as to why they didn't proceed with the motions as urgent as planned.
Because otherwise, it's just going to be endless.
That is the fear, so.
Jim, we had a comment.
I just, we've mentioned rocks, I see that as a traffic hazard. But I think dog railings for a wall is something I'm going to look into. Because this is, I told you there will be no end to this.
Yeah, no, I still think.
He's been working on it all week long.
All week long, he's been working on it twenty-five years.
I know, I know.
But he's been really at it, he had a little rope out there the other day, making sure he got right up to his rope, and he was measuring, and.
Yeah.
He's had a busy week.
He could do all that on his property.
And he still, he still thinks that where he's going is his property, and it's not.
Yeah.
So I still think a visual barrier is going to be the only way to, where it's obvious. If you put something on the other side of it, it's obvious. Right now, it's not obvious, unless you're looking at a, you know. Yeah, so.
That's what made me think of the rocks, because I know I can push rocks down there that.
You go, Jim.
But then those are going to be into the road.
Well, that's right.
Because they can't be on his property, right, right, right.
Volkswagen sign rocks.
Yeah. I know.
Could be like one of those rocks at the fairy garden there.
Right.
But he's got his tractor, so. So are you thinking next Monday?
What I'm proposing is that we, I don't know when they're going to be available, that's going to be one of the wild cards. But we planned to do that. And if it can't be next Monday, let's see if we can schedule maybe a regular session, but a special one. That we can then open up as a regular session, then go into an executive session to come out, to make it all kosher at a time when we all, the attorneys, could leave. But I'd like to, I think we should get this done by next week.
Yep, so if you're making a motion to pursue having an executive session.
That's right.
Then I'll second it. All in favor of just pursuing, going after an executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, any other business? If not, then I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn for the day. So, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Eric, thank you for calling Adam down here. Thank you for calling, Jim.